will now begin. Before we begin, a few housekeeping items. This evening's hearing includes testimony from two subject matter experts who will discuss the legal aspects of redistricting. Norm Eisen of the Brookings Institute and Rob Yablon of the UW Madison Law School. Finally, beginning at approximately 6:30 PM, the public testimony portion of the meeting will begin. As a reminder, because of the pandemic, this remains a virtual hearing with many participants from around the state and nation. And technology can be a fickle, a fickle even under the best of circumstances. We appreciate in advance the patience and understanding of viewers as well as presenters and commission members should there be any technical challenges this evening. With that, I will now hand it over to Commission Chair Christopher Ford to call the meeting to order.
Good evening, everyone. I like to call it the eighth hearing of the People's Maps Commission to order. As a reminder, this evening, we won't need a quorum because we are not voting on any matters. It's an informational hearing only. When I say your name, if you could, please say President from the first congressional district, Commissioner Tobias.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony from the second congressional district.
Present.
Commissioner McClellan from the third congressional district.
Present.
Commissioner Rangel from the fourth congressional district.
Present.
Commissioner Ram from the fifth congressional district.
Present.
Commissioner Prentice from the sixth congressional district.
Present.
Commissioner Bissonette from the seventh congressional district.
Present.
And Commissioner Phillips from the eighth congressional district.
Present.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight's hearing, I want to make sure that the citizens of the second congressional district where we're having our virtual hearing this evening are able to briefly get to know our commission members. I'll now invite each of the commissioners to say a few introductory remarks about themselves. So starting in the first congressional district, Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Chair Ford, and good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Tobias. I live in the city of Racine and am honored to be a representative for the first congressional district. I'm also honored to be here this evening with everyone, looking forward to hearing a little bit more about the second congressional district as well as from our two speakers. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobias. Commissioner Anthony from the second congressional district, of whom we'll be hearing a little bit more from in a little bit. So Commissioner Anthony.
Thank you, Chris Ford. I'm Reuben Anthony, the president and CEO of the Urban League of Greater Madison, and I'm proud to be representing the second congressional district. And I look forward to sharing a little bit more with you later about many of the attributes and assets in the second congressional district.
Absolutely, thank you. Commissioner McClellan from the third congressional district.
Yeah, hi, I'm Anne Marie McClellan. I live in Menominee on the west side of the state. I'm retired and in my retirement, I've been learning a whole lot. I've been a student of redistricting since these hearings have started, and I'm happy to be here and listen to our guest speakers and continue the learning.
Thank you. Commissioner Rangel from the fourth.
Thank you, Chair Ford. My name is Benjamin Rangel. I proudly serve as a 12th grade high school government teacher here in Milwaukee at Crystal Ray Jesuit High School. Been doing that for two years. Before that, got my graduate degree at Mark Catton's Badger before that as an undergrad, so lived in Wisconsin most of my life, really happy to be on this commission, proud of all the work our commission and the commissioners have done so far. Looking forward to hearing public testimony and expert testimony tonight, so glad to be here.
Thank you. Commissioner Ram from the fifth congressional district.
Good evening, my name is Susan Ramf. I live in Wauwautosa. I'm an HR leader for Manpower Group here in Milwaukee. I'm honored to be a member of this commission. We are committed to transparency, to listening, and to using empirical and nonpartisan criteria for drawing our maps. And it's particularly timely to listen to our speakers tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ram. Commissioner Prentice from the sixth congressional district.
Thank you, Chair Ford, and good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Prentice, and I'm representing the sixth congressional district. I am a librarian, and I live and work in the city of Sheboygan, and I'm happy to be here again tonight for what is sure to be another wonderful hearing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Bissonette from the seventh congressional district.
Yes, thank you, Chair Ford. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Bissonette. I'm the dean of students at the Luke Quateray Ojibwe K-12 School, and I also sit on the Board of Regents for the Luke Quateray Ojibwe College. The Southern Congressional, where the SAP is running up here, we're pretty happy about that. I got to meet Anne Marie in person at a hockey game in Menominee. But this evening, I'm absolutely excited about hearing about the second congressional and excited about this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Phillips from the eighth.
Yes, thank you. I'm a, I was a cancer doctor up here in Appleton for the last 22 years, retired recently. I have a lot of history in Madison, 13 years of training in Madison. We've had eight family members matriculate from UW Madison. I have two daughters in Madison, so clearly it feels like a second home who doesn't have Madison and that whole area. I also want to say thank you to the speakers and to those giving public statements tonight, very important. You know, like all of us, I came into this with a lot of passion for nonpartisan redistricting, but I think that's increased just hearing all the speakers and the damage that they've been able to relate about gerrymandering in the state. So again, thank you very much. It's a real privilege to be a part of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Phillips. My name is Chris Ford. I am an emergency medicine physician here in Milwaukee. My wife and I both are former UW Madison Health residents, as a residency there, and my wife actually is from Sun Prairie and was a Badger cheerleader, so she is a full blue, full red, I should say, Badger. So we're very excited to hear from our speakers this evening and are very excited that it is in the second congressional district as we really hope to bring our formal hearings to a close here and also continue our work in our meetings upcoming in the future. So, and I hope every, all the citizens of the state of Wisconsin and the citizens of the second congressional district in general can see that each of us commissioners are truly normal and average Wisconsin nights. All of us come from diverse backgrounds and hold different kinds of jobs and even have very political beliefs. But the one thing that you've heard from all of us here, as well as you've been hearing throughout this process, is that we have one thing in common, and that's the desire to have fair legislative maps and also work together with citizens like you, citizens throughout the state to make those clear maps happen. As a quick update to those that are watching, we would ask that, you know, in the light of continuing to hear from you and get a lot of our guidance from you and where you want those lines drawn, we ask that you go ahead and reach out and go to our website. Feel free just to Google People's Maps Commission, it'll be the first hit that you get. But on that site is information about redistricting as well as the opportunity to submit communities of interest, as well as complete your own congressional maps with some of the data and some of the software that we'll be using to compile our own maps. And so again, we'll pull a lot from the public submissions there, so feel free to submit a map at any point in time. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and invite Commissioner Anthony to provide overview of the second congressional district. Commissioner Anthony, floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. Well, good evening once again. I'm Reuben Anthony, the president and CEO of the Urban League of Greater Madison, and I'm representing the second congressional district on the People's Mapping Commission. So welcome to tonight's hearing. I am volunteering to serve on this commission because I strongly believe that we must protect the future of democracy in Wisconsin. To accomplish this, we need voting that leads to a representative bureaucracy that can only occur when there is independent and a transparent process for establishing congressional districts and mapping in the state. This is important for electing politicians who serve the will of the people. My colleagues and I commit to you a process that will continue to be transparent and fair. Let's talk about the second congressional district. The second congressional district is made up of five full counties, Dane, Sauk, Iowa, Lafayette, and Green County, and two partial counties, roughly half of Rock County, which has large communities like Beloit, Edgerton, and Evansville, but not others such as Jamesville. The district also includes a small portion of Richland County. Congressional District Two has a total of 18 cities, 55 villages, 56 if you count a partial village, and 102 towns, 104 if you count partial towns. In regards to other demographics, it has a population of 773,600-plus people. It is 75.65% urban and 23.35% rural. It is a district that has many attractions such as the Frank Lloyd Wright's Teleesin, the House on the Rock. It has many parks and outdoor spaces like the Blue Mountain State Park in Iowa County, parts of the Wisconsin Dell, which is partially in Sauk County, and then three other counties outside of the second congressional district. It is the home of cheesemakers like Arrowice Cheese Shop in New Glares, beer makers like the Bulgarian Brew House in Monroe. It's a district with many farms such as the Devo Farms in Twin Grove Groves, which has nine different species of animals. But more importantly, it shows firsthand how the district provides milk, cheese, egg, beef, and other products from the farmland of Wisconsin to the tables and families of Americans all across this country. It is a district with beautiful bluffs and baleful, and it has many water attractions such as Lake Dalton, the Wisconsin River, Lake Mendota, Lake Monona, and Lake Wabisa, to name a few. Now, in Dane County, it is the state capital, the state center of government. We have a lot of state government and city and county government here. It is the home of the University of Wisconsin of Madison, college town, USA. It has one of the largest farmers markets in the, in the, in the nation, and it has a world-class bunch of industries such as Exact Sciences, Epic, Pro-Mega, CUNY Mutual, American Family Insurance, and many more. It is my sincere honor to serve on this commission and help protect democracy in this great state that I call home. And on behalf of the second congressional district, I want to thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Anthony. Well, well stated, and all the highlights of the second CD that I remember when I was there, and I'm sure as the other commissioners here remember, are all highlighted there. So thank you so much for that overview. Tonight, we are pleased to have two individuals presenting who will discuss with us the different legal aspects and impacts of redistricting. As a reminder to our commissioners, in the interest of time for our individual speakers, we will be doing a line of questioning after our first speaker and then a second line of questioning after our second speaker goes. So our first speaker will be Norm Eisen. He's a senior fellow in Governance Studies at the Brookings Institute and an expert on law, ethics, and anti-corruption. He currently provides pro bono legal representation for the voter protection program through his law firm, Eisen P L L C. Norm, thank you so much for taking the time to participate in this evening's hearing, and I'll now turn it over to you.
There we are. Thank you, Chair Ford. Good evening to you and to all the members of the Wisconsin's People Maps, People's Maps Commission for inviting me to present. The work you're doing is so critical to our democracy, and I'll just depart from my remarks to say how really thrilling it is for me to see the representatives of, of all the congressional districts on, on the screen, because this is democracy in action. And ours is a democracy in which the most fundamental aspect is that the voters choose their representatives. Everything else flows from that in a democratic republic rather than the representatives choosing their voters. So it is so great for me to see a structure, an advisory structure like this in Wisconsin that, that brings our democracy to life. So I, of course, am gonna speak to you this evening about why the work you're doing is so critical to our democracy, that maps that Wisconsin will ultimately draw will shape every aspect of life in your state, and the people who will be affected should be fully informed and have a say in making sure they're nonpartisan, not favoring one party or the other, but being fair. So your advice will be critical in establishing that standard. I'm, I'm pleased to focus tonight in my remarks on litigation issues in redistricting. As you'll hear, I'm gonna track, tackle what I think are the three most important litigation-related questions confronting all of you. I've been a litigator for 30 years. It's very hard for me to believe that I've been at it for that long, but I suppose my white beard offers some evidence. We litigators believe in evidence, and so my beard offers some evidence that in fact I'm in, headed into my, soon into my fourth decade of doing this work. During that time, I've had the privilege of working on redistricting matters, including as part of my role in the Obama White House as special counsel and special assistant to the President for Ethics and Government Reform, where my duties included serving as the President's chief political lawyer. So in that respect, I was involved in the run-up to the previous decennial redistricting cycle. Today, I'm here, as we heard from Chair Ford, in my capacity for the voter protection program, where I provide outside counsel. I'm also the chair of the board of the VPP. We are a nonpartisan 501(c)(3) entity which works to support state leaders across the country in protecting our elections and American democracy. I'm also a senior fellow at Brookings, but I should tell you that my remarks reflect my own views only, not the views of the VPP or of Brookings, Brookings other scholars, employees, officers, or trustees, and I've provided my affiliations for transparency and identification purposes only. That being said, I'll address those three key questions. They are, number one, when could litigation start? Number two, which courts would hear challenges to redistricting? And number three, perhaps most important of all, what consideration or considerations will guide those courts in evaluating the maps that may be before them? Let's start with that first threshold question of when litigation may occur. Court battles, whether over congressional districts or, as has been more often the case in Wisconsin, over state legislative districts traditionally arise in one of two very different circumstances. The first is that these legal cases, which can be hotly disputed, sometimes go all the way to the United States Supreme Court. As we'll discuss tonight, there have been some very important Supreme Court cases, including in recent years. The first of those circumstances that leads to these cases is a governmental impasse. That is, when you have a lack of consensus between the two chambers of the legislature or between the legislature and the governor, and the result is you are prevented from having new maps that are enacted into law. Now, you may think that the solution to breaking through such a loggerhead is to just keep using the old districts, but usually you can't do that. And as all of you well know, populations are constantly shifting, growing, contracting over time. That means the existing old maps start to violate a core legal rule, maybe the most core legal rule in this area that governs the maps, and that is the one-person, one-vote principle. Lawsuits follow, and those lawsuits tell the court, hey, you have to rebalance these district populations because the government has failed to do so. And these maps no longer fairly allocate one person with one vote. So that is the first way we get litigation as the result of governmental impasse. The second way that we tend to see litigation comes when government overcomes whatever roadblocks may exist, and new maps are enacted, but the district lines of the new maps violate legal requirements like that one-person, one-vote rule. And that is, the judge entertains complaints that one person's voting power is not equivalent to another person's. That judge, some of the people in Wisconsin have had their voting power watered down relative to other people in the same state. In the most extreme situations, you can have some very dramatic disparities that have led to the litigation that we've seen in Wisconsin and elsewhere as we, as we look, as we look around the country. And of course, while we're gonna principally focus on Wisconsin tonight, there's a lot of learning, including in the Supreme Court, that bears upon the questions that we're Wisconsin, where we'll start our analysis, has seen litigation in both of these circumstances, these two basic circumstances. Impasse litigation has occurred when the political branches had divided-party control, and that has been a, 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 a common, the more common phenomenon as a litigation matter for decades, the 1950s, 60s, 80s, 90s, and the 2000s. And of course, you're in a situation of, of divided-party control of government today. In the 1960s, the legislature tried to break an impasse with the governor by passing new maps through using a joint resolution, which does not require the governor's signature, lest you think that that could provide a vehicle to break a logjam. It does not. The Wisconsin Supreme Court unanimously rejected that attempt. They held, in the Reynolds v. Zimmerman case, that Wisconsin's constitution requires both political branches, both legislature and the executive, the governor, to be involved in redistricting. And of course, the third political branch, the judiciary, is the referee on that. In 2011, to take another example, there was unified one-party control of both chambers of the legislature and of the governorship. This meant no impasse, and new maps were quickly signed into law. That brought us to the second example where the maps were, maps were brought before the court, and of course, you've heard about the cases of Baldus versus the Government Accountability Board and Whitford v. Gill that resulted from that second situation, the challenges to the fairness of the map, maps. This cycle, there is no predicting when we might see litigation. It could be filed at any minute. It could even be filed before maps are finalized or before state census data is received. So it's important for you to be ready. I'm glad you're doing this, this convening this evening, and as you may know, a case has already been filed in Minnesota, Watson v. Simon, and that asserts presumptively that the districts no longer meet the one-person, one-vote requirement, that Wisconsin voters are being differently treated and some have more power for their vote, some less. In Wisconsin, a challenge was also filed in the 2000s cycle before the census data was received, and this year we're getting the census data late because of a different set of litigation and other issues in previous years. That 2000s case asserted that an impasse was certain due to the divided legislature at the time, and one of those 2010 cycle cases that I told you about, the Baldus case, was also filed before new maps were enacted into law. So the takeaway here is that you could be confronting additional litigation, even a wave of litigation, at any time. Courts may put these cases on hold to try to allow the legislature and the governor to attempt to negotiate, but still hanging on to jurisdiction, their power over irresolvable conflicts. I should be candid with you that there is no way to predict when legal challenges may begin in Wisconsin or how quickly they will be resolved. That is the takeaway as we answer this first question. If the commission desires that your work, whether it's maps that you draw, the public input you've gathered, or any of your other work, if you want that to be available to a court reviewing a legal challenge to Wisconsin redistricting, I encourage you to move expeditiously, as I know you're doing, and to make that work available as soon as is feasible, possible, and convenient for you to do. So time may turn out to be of the essence. That is my first question, and I'm sure you'll, you'll greet my questions with more question. Let me turn now to the second question, which is, where would challenges be heard? In federal court or in state court? All substantive redistricting disputes in Wisconsin, since the one-person, one-vote, you're hearing a lot about that, it's the core principle that guides our work in this area. All of those cases since the revolution of the, around that key legal principle that, that the courts established in the 1960s have been decided in federal court. Now, it is the case that certain claims could be brought in either state or federal courts, and there have been some attempts to go to state court in Wisconsin, but they have been relatively minimal. I'm happy to talk about those precedents in the Wisconsin AFL-CIO versus Elections Board, and some of those other state court cases that, that, that we'll look at. In federal courts, redistricting challenges are heard through a well-established process, balancing the concerns of pressing timelines on the one hand, that requires speed, with, on the other hand, the need for adequate appellate review, which takes time. Challenges to redistricting plans or to the lack of new maps during an, due to an impasse or two, are, are, are two basic triggers for court action are heard by a three-judge panel. Decisions are appealable as of right to the US Supreme Court, unlike in other cases where the Supreme Court decides whether or not it will hear an appeal, what we call discretionary appeals. In Wisconsin state courts, there's less certainty about the process because of the sparse record of litigating redistricting in those state courts. There is, some of you may know, a pending rulemaking petition before the Wisconsin Supreme Court that seeks to create special procedural rules for redistricting cases. Under that proposal, redistricting cases in state court would start in the Wisconsin Supreme Court instead of making their way up through the normal appellate process, but the court has not yet acted on the petition, and as we discussed, redistricting litigation for this cycle could start at any time. Third, and, and finally- Third, and, and finally, we have the question of what criteria guide a court in evaluating maps? And this may be the most important of the three questions. Courts give the legislative and executive branches significant deference. They, they bow to the decisions that the political branches make about these matters. And that goes so far as to provide them with a last chance to adopt or fix maps before there is judicial intervention. And the, if that fails, a court will choose a map to impose or will require specific boundaries be adjusted to create a legally compliant map. As this commission has, I believe, come to recognize, told you've come to recognize, the drawing of district lines is complex. It involves multiple and sometimes competing considerations. Judicial review of potential maps is also highly fact-intensive. And that kind of a judicial review generally involves testimony from expert witnesses and many alternative map proposals. The main guideposts that the court will look at as it evaluates maps and related evidence are set by state and federal law. Wisconsin's constitution requires that each state senate district must be comprised of whole assembly districts. In practice, that has come to mean that three assembly seats are nested in each senate district. Districts must be contiguous, that is, they must touch each other, and they must be as compact as practicable. Districts should preferably be bounded by county precinct, town, or ward lines, by pre-existing map lines, but they are not sacred and they can be moved around for redistricting purposes to equalize population. That brings us back to the idea, one person, one vote. That is your touchstone. Wisconsin's constitution requires that districts be apportioned according to the number of inhabitants after each federal census. But interestingly, it doesn't require perfection. You don't have to have exactly equal populations in each district. Federal law mandates essentially exactly equal numbers of residents in congressional districts, but courts have not held state legislative districts to that standard. That potentially allows up to a 10% deviation in population between and across districts. Nevertheless, in recent cycles, Wisconsin state legislative districts have had very low population deviations. That's the state picture. One final note for you, courts will also look to the requirements of federal law, both the U.S. Constitution and statutes like the Voting Rights Act. I'm not going to dwell on the VRA. I know you'll be learning more about that. Federal law does prohibit racial gerrymandering. And section two of the VRA requires that minority communities have the opportunity to elect a representative of their choice under certain circumstances set forth in the case law. There are other traditional considerations in redistricting that courts may weigh, like keeping communities of interest together. In other states, that's a legal requirement, but not in Wisconsin. That means preserving communities of interest might not be weighed as heavily by a court. I'm sure you've heard about the landmark recent Supreme Court decision in Rucho v. Common Cause. Under that decision, partisan gerrymandering cannot be adjudicated any longer in federal court. It's considered a political question. It might be prohibited or limited by the state constitution or federal or state statutes. The issue of partisan gerrymandering has not been adjudicated in Wisconsin state courts. So we don't know what protections the state constitution may offer. We have some views, but that has not been determined yet and is the state Supreme Court that will have the final say. So those are the legal rules and the answer to our third and most critical question. And it probably is fitting because this is an area that continues to have so many questions that we've ended on the question of what the state Supreme Court would utter with their final say on the, on the gerrymandering question. I want to thank all of you again for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. People often don't like hearing about forthcoming litigation. It can stimulate, stimulate anxiety. I, I see the chair smiling because he's a physician, physicians in particular. It's not a favorite subject, but in this case, all of you are wise to be prepared for the litigation that could very well result, that in the one case we talked about has already begun. Because your job is one of the holiest, one of the most sacred ones in our democracy, and that is to help protect the will of the people and so our democratic republic itself. That's what fair redistricting does. And we're all very grateful to you for your role as citizens in helping Wisconsin achieve that fairness of one person, one vote. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Norman. You know, even at this position, I can tell you it's better to be, better to be prepared in going through it, which is kind of the central message of all this. So we truly appreciate you coming out and giving us some of that foresight there. So we'll go ahead and open it up to questions. We'll start with our first congressional district, Commissioner Tobias.
Yes, thank you Chair Ford. And thank you, Norman, for your great presentation. I appreciate it. So my question is, in any of the previous determinations by the courts, have they used a map that was put together by a third party? You know, not necessarily by a commission, but you know, where have they kind of leaned towards? Where, where have they gotten the maps that they have then used when it comes to, when it comes to them needing to make that decision?
The, the work that you do and the inputs that the courts have considered coalesce, it is not unusual as we look at the, the baseline is the political maps. That is where they tend to start. But it's not unusual at all, particularly as we look at the national scenario, for there to be multiple experts who, who are bringing multiple maps. If I can just put a plug in for the work that you're doing and, and for doing it briskly. I know you're doing everything you can to move briskly. As, as the people's commission, you know, you're not here with any partisan mandate. You, you represent a wide array of voices, of geographies, of ideologies. And so the information, any information that you provide to the court, I think, comes with, while it won't be treated with the same presumption and deference as the official maps, such as they may be, I think it will, it will be weighed and, and evaluated. And so that's an important part. You know, the experts often come in, it is very, if you track any of this redistricting litigation, the expert testimony can be challenging to wade through. And I know sometimes it's, it's, it's very challenging for the judges who have to go through it. I think your work can be a critically important touchstone in that mix. So, so the answer is evidence from a wide array of sources is typically considered.
Thank you.
Of course, I should add, in some states, you have state law has erected a mandatory citizens' commission. Here, the governor acted within the scope of the powers that were available for all of you to give advice. And in those cases, the, sometimes those commissions are also subject to legal challenge. And of course, their maps also are subject to legal challenge. So this is going to be a very interesting and we think very litigious cycle, including another reason that your work is so important is because the census data that we normally would rely on for this work is going to be delayed. And that is both going to create a void in the litigation that is going on and also compress the timelines. So all the more reason that your work is so important. Thanks, Elizabeth.
Commissioner Anthony?
Thank you Chairman Ford. Norman, I have a question. I like the way you presented to us tonight, so thank you. Paid attention to when you talked about the, the state constitutional requirements. And it made me think that if we have these rigorous constitutional requirements, how could this state be so gerrymandered? How, how did they get past the court and the constitutional rigor to get us to the point that we're at today? Maybe one or two things.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Anthony Rubin. And, and by the way, I enjoyed hearing about the second congressional district too. I got an extra bonus for my testimony tonight. And the answer is that, and, and I'm, I'm really gonna, I'm gonna say that this is a plague on, 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 on all parties. You know, the, the temptation nationally to push things to the absolute legal limit and to abuse the fact that these are political questions. The Supreme Court, you know, has now said that, that it's going to take a hands-off approach. It had been trending in that direction for a while. The presumption of regularity that is given to the maps, the deference that the courts tend to use with the maps, the political process comes up with. It results in, it results in outcomes that are, that are not always fair. That's why we need touchstones like a people's commission of this kind. You know, it is hard for civilians, folks who, who don't do this for a living. And who's, is Professor Yablon speaking after me? Yes, so Professor Yablon will have more to say about this in the Wisconsin context. But it's hard for civilians who don't do this for a living to hear all the high-minded principles and then look at these maps with these absolutely crazy gerrymanders, as you've probably, you know, as you see and think, how can that be consistent with the law? But it, it has to do with the plasticity, the flexibility of rules, the deference. And the judicial branch is always, sometime is always cautious about overbearing its will and overriding the political, the more political branches. And so it's resulted in some bad maps in Wisconsin and otherwise. And sometimes judges are not immune from political considerations. And I'll say nationally that, 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 that happens with both parties in different places. So this is not unique to one party or the other. And what we need to do, this is part of the reason that I'm a, I'm a supporter of commissions like yours. And indeed, again, just my own opinions, none of the entities I work for. I, I think that having the mandatory commissions is also a very good thing. That's controversial. Some people see it as a unilateral disarmament. But, but I think that we've got to, it's just a terrible threat to our democracy. And this is a little off topic, but I think that the For the People Act, H.R. 1, which has just passed the House and which is going to move very vigorously through the Senate, the, the redistricting portions of the bill were very heavily amended in the amendments process last, which I, I think was last Tuesday. So you have to make sure you're seeing the final version and it'll probably get another go-round in the Senate. But it establishes a set of national rules, which we really should have, and which the Supreme Court has invited, to avoid these kinds of crazy outcomes where a combination of deference and partisanship does such damage. So this is a problem everywhere in the law. It's, I think it's Humpty Dumpty who said in Alice in Wonderland, "Words mean just what I say they mean." You know, the two sides get up when I go to court and we're both talking about the same constitution and statutes and regulations and rules, but we have two totally different interpretations of what they mean. So some of it has to do with the plasticity of the legal rules as well.
Thank you.
I just boiled three years of a law school education down into five minutes. If I had a better law school education, I would have given a tighter answer.
Commissioner McCullough for the third.
Oh, thank you. And I will admit that your talk gave me a little bit of anxiety as I'm listening to all this about litigation and, you know, preemptive litigation. And I know the rule change was put forward with the Wisconsin courts to, and that's still under consideration. But I was wondering, is there any litigation that you can see or any way that someone can go about trying to discredit the People's Map Commission or our work that would somehow make it difficult for the courts to consider our report and our maps?
Well, certainly you can expect that when your report and your maps are offered, we'll see who, which parties in the litigation offer it. When your report and your maps are offered, that there will be a vigorous effort to point out methodological flaws and other issues. That always happens in litigation and certainly in redistricting litigation. But I, I think that, you know, you're, you're doing everything you can to insulate against that by having a fair, even-handed process. Indeed, the fact that we're having this conversation, that you are so carefully going through the hearings, making such a big effort to, to hear various perspectives, to educate yourselves and to lay a sound foundation will be a good rebuttal. But yes, you can expect to hear, I don't know if it'll make it onto the front pages of the newspapers. This is kind of the skirmishing that goes on in the litigation. But when the litigation happens, it's likely that one of the parties will present your report, present your maps, and then the, the other party that feels disadvantaged by it. And don't make any predictions about who that might be. Or you, both sides may have a certain portion of your work. They say, well, I like this half of the map, but I don't like that half of the map. So that goes on too. You know, the care with which you're doing your work and the care with which the governor thought through, how to construct the commission, how to have the commissioners, the geographic diversity, the other forms of what I understand to be ideological diversity, the different backgrounds that you have, that will all come into play to justify it. So don't feel anxious, Anne Marie. My main job as a litigator is to assure non-litigators that it will be just fine.
Thank you.
See you downplaying your law school education. There you go.
The most, the most important things I know, you know about this, Dr. Ford. The most important things I know about practicing law were not acquired in law school.
All right, Ben, feel free.
Yeah, thank you Chair Ford. Thank you, Norman, for your testimony here and the advice you're providing us. And just the, I think Chair Ford mentioned earlier, the foresight. Actually, Rubin and I think it was Elizabeth asked two of the questions I had prepared. And so kind of on the spot, I was trying to think of one. And, and I suppose from your perspective, you had mentioned the two options of where the litigation might occur, state or federal, just, you know, based on what you know, you know, the process we've been going through and the, what you know about past litigation in Wisconsin. Should we have kind of a preference in terms of, you know, end result that will end up using as close to a map as we create as possible? Should we prefer that if litigation happens or when litigation happens that ends up at the state courts or the federal court? Do we have a, I don't know, do you think there's a preference there?
There's nationwide litigators. particularly those who work in the voting rights field, as I've done, civil rights field, as I've done. Even before going to law school, I worked for a civil rights organization and found myself in court. So if I were to stretch, I could say I've been at this since 1985. I went to court for the first time on a civil rights matter. We tend to have a bias. I'll admit upfront that I'm just going to tell you my biases. It's not a scientific analysis. We tend to have a slight bias or lean for federal court. You know, the development of the Supreme Court jurisprudence has made federal court a little tougher. I won't predict where the battles will unfold in Wisconsin. I had a front row seat to some of the litigation in the election and post-election context. And I thought your state courts did a very strong job. And so did your federal courts. So they were, you know, they both, as I studied that, those litigation matters, I thought they both acquitted themselves well. So, you know, we'll have to see. One thing I can, I can tell you, Commissioner, it will be out of your hands. So that is, you know, none of us will have the choice of where that litigation proceeds. So beyond that, it's very hard to, very hard to predict. You know, if I were gambling, I would gamble that there will, that the relatively light inaction, in fact, that AFL case, I was looking at my notes as I think about it. That was also a federal case, the relative that I referred to, the relatively light amount, the disproportion, the bias towards federal court. You're more likely to see a little more balancing in this cycle because of the Supreme, the United States Supreme Court jurisprudence, which makes it tougher for the federal courts to hear some of these matters. Thank you.
Commissioner Rand.
Thank you. So to build on Ben's question, Norm, have the makeups of the courts over the last 10 years across the country changed in a material way that may or may not affect outcomes in this cycle? And also, how do you expect that the greatly increased public awareness and public engagement may also affect outcomes?
Those are fascinating questions, Commissioner Rand, Susan. I, you know, the, it is, it is, the previous administration was very successful. It was, they really focused in a way that we did not as successfully achieve in the Obama administration, which I served, on filling, on holding vacancies in the federal courts and filling those vacancies. So, you know, that phenomenon as a federal matter is familiar to all of us who follow the judicial system. But the federal courts held a lot of surprises for those who predicted that there might be a partisan lean one way or another in the election and post-election litigation cycle that was just concluded. So I think the judges of both parties, there are exceptions. But the federal judges, I most often am litigating in federal court. And the federal judges before whom I appear, you don't have a strict one-on-one partisan predictable tilt. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. So that, of course, what's happened at the United States Supreme Court is a reluctance, that presumption that we've talked about, the reluctance to engage. I would have liked to have seen, I respectfully disagree. I have at least one law school classmate who's serving up there and a number of friends on both sides, on both sides from both parties. So I have to be very respectful in how I disagree with them. And I supported my friend, actually. I publicly endorsed him, even though he's of another justice, Associate Justice Gorsuch. And I went to law school together and he's of another political party. But I supported him because he's a very fair-minded jurist. And I thought was a good initial appointment. So I want to be very respectful of those justices. Who knows, I might end up litigating a redistricting case and end up up there. I respectfully disagree with their jurisprudence, with the outcome of the Ruisho case and the direction they've taken. I think there should be, when you look at these ridiculously gerrymandered maps, I mean, they, they, they're like jigsaw puzzles. There's no rhyme or reason. I think the Supreme Court should take a firmer hand in one person, one vote. But as you can see, I'm not wearing a black robe. And so we fought those battles. The law is what it is. That's going to be a bigger determinant, in my view, than the strict partisan origin of the political parties, original political affiliation of the federal judges. And then the Wisconsin bench, you know, some were very anxious about your Supreme Court and look how it turned out. It was a closely divided decision on the election cases. I did not think, personally, again, just my opinion, I did not think the legal questions were that close. So that might give some pause on partisanship grounds. But your job is to draw the very best, very fairest maps you can, to ground them as strongly as you can. I heard the term evidence-based, to make sure they're evidence-based, not to worry about party at all. What is the right thing to do? And then to let the redistricting chips fall where they may.
Awesome. Well, in the interest of time for our next speaker, we're going to go ahead and stop there. Norm, thank you so much for coming out and providing us with the data and the info there. And we hope to be in contact with you in the future as well. And you're always welcome to come on and provide us some more foresight information, what to expect.
I may just sign on for the next one to hear about the third congressional district. So, you know, please invite me back. It's very, very nice to meet all of you. And truly, I thank you so much for what you're doing. It's your highest calling as citizens, not just of Wisconsin, but of the United States. So we're all very grateful to you for that. And I'll stay on a little longer, as long as I can, before I have to go to my next engagement. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. Our second presenter, Robert Yablon, who teaches civil procedure, federal jurisdiction, and the law of democracy at UW Madison. His research interests include political and election law, constitutional law, federal courts, and statutory interpretation. Previous to this position, he served as a law clerk for U.S. Supreme Court justices, both Ruth Bader Ginsburg and Sonia Sotomayor. Yablon has been the principal author of dozens of appellate and trial-level briefs and has argued in a number of state and federal courts, including the U.S. Supreme Court. Robert, thank you so much for joining us this evening, and I'll now turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Ford. Thanks to all of you for having me tonight. And thank you for the important work that you've been doing and are going to continue to do on behalf of representational fairness in Wisconsin. I, first, let me acknowledge, you've already been at this for an hour. If you feel the need to stand up and stretch, please don't let me stop you. I will not be offended. I'm going to share my screen with you and show you some slides. My topic tonight that I'll be focusing on is the Voting Rights Act and related doctrines that are going to be the backdrop for at least some of the work that you'll be doing. And when it comes to the Voting Rights Act, the core premise is fairly simple. And that is to ensure that cohesive minority groups have adequate opportunities to participate in the political process and elect representatives of their choice. The devil, however, is in the details. And attempting to comply with the Voting Rights Act can be a minefield for those who draw electoral maps. And so I'm going to just try to walk you through it a bit tonight with some of the applicable law. And here's what I'll do. I'll begin just briefly with some general background about the Voting Rights Act. Then I'll spend probably the majority of my time running through some of the key Supreme Court rulings on the subject that provide some guidance for your work. And then I'll say a little bit about how the Voting Rights Act applies in Wisconsin. And then I'll conclude with a few takeaways and suggestions and I hope a bit of reassurance. So let's begin with the statute itself. So the Voting Rights Act was adopted in 1965. It's landmark legislation that sought to grapple with our nation's long and troubling history of disenfranchisement and political marginalization of communities of color, most egregiously and systematically in the South, but certainly not limited to that part of the country. The legislation has been hugely consequential in helping to dismantle at least some of the exclusionary practices that prevented minority groups for many decades from participating fully in the nation's political life. Here you see it being signed into law by President Lyndon Johnson. Among the dignitaries there, you might see Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Now, as originally adopted in 1965, the centerpiece of this act was something called preclearance. And the idea behind preclearance was that the act created a number of covered jurisdictions. These were states and localities that were thought to be the biggest offenders in terms of voting rights denials in the past. And those covered jurisdictions were prohibited from changing their voting laws until they got federal approval from the U.S. Department of Justice or from a federal court in Washington, D.C. And approval would not be given unless those federal officials were satisfied that these changes to the law would not in any way abridge or roll back voting rights for minority groups. Here you see the jurisdictions that were covered jurisdictions under Section 5. And you'll see that Wisconsin is not among them. So although this was really the core of the act at the beginning, it never has been the issue in Wisconsin. And I mentioned Section 5, so this is Section 5 that created the preclearance regime. I mentioned this really just as context. Because as some of you may know, the Supreme Court in a 2013 case called Shelby County versus Holder invalidated the coverage formula of Section 5. And so Section 5 is no longer operative anywhere in the country. So what was once the centerpiece of the Voting Rights Act is no more. And instead, there is one other part of the Voting Rights Act, Section 2, that is really the key provision for your purposes. And so it's Section 2 that I'm really going to be focusing on this evening. And it was, its present text dates from a political compromise that Congress reached in 1982 when it reauthorized the Voting Rights Act. And here's what Congress was up to at that time. As you may know, the U.S. Constitution prohibits states from denying or abridging the right to vote on account of race. That's the 15th Amendment. And it also bars states from denying equal protection of the law. That's the 14th Amendment. Litigants had been going to court arguing that certain districting plans violated these constitutional rights by diluting the voting power of minority groups. In other words, the claim was that lines were being drawn in ways that prevented minority voters from electing their preferred representatives. And that could happen by splitting minority communities so they wouldn't have electoral majorities. It could mean packing minority groups into just a few districts so they couldn't elect more representatives. Or it might mean submerging them into things like large multi-member districts, where again, they would not have effective majority control. The Supreme Court in these constitutional cases held that in order for plaintiffs to prevail, they had to show discriminatory intent. In other words, that there was, there was an intentional effort, a purposeful effort to hinder minority representation. As a practical matter, though, it was sometimes hard for litigants to meet that standard, to prove intentionality, even though it may well have been that the relevant decisions were racially motivated. And so through Section 2, Congress sought to provide a little bit of extra protection for minority groups by prohibiting states from adopting districting plans and other voting rules, not just if they have a discriminatory intent, but also if they have a discriminatory effect on minority voters, whatever the underlying motive. This is sometimes known as the results test. And so this is the legal text that emerged. And I'm going to put this on the screen for you, just so you get the legalese in all of its glory. But I'm just going to highlight a few bits of this text. I should say that this provision, this prohibition on discriminatory results, this applies when you're talking about districting to both federal districts, congressional districts, as well as state legislative districts. So you're going to be thinking about the Voting Rights Act in both of those contexts. So this text you see here, the red highlighted text, it sets out this idea that what is prohibited are practices, including redistricting practices, that deny or that have, that result in the denial or abridgement of the right to vote on account of race or color. Now, how do you determine whether a voting practice results in such a denial or abridgement? Well, the statute tells you that you should consider the totality of the circumstances. And the question is whether, considering that totality, members of the protected group have less opportunity than other members of the electorate to participate in the political process and elect representatives of their choice. Now, the statutory language ends with one proviso. And that is that nothing in the section is meant to give members of a protected group a right to proportionality. So just because, say, a minority group is 30% of a state's population, that doesn't mean that they have a right to be able to field and win elections in 30% of the districts. So there is no right to proportionality under the Voting Rights Act. Well, this text alone provides not particularly helpful guidance to those who are actually trying to do the work, right? And figure out, you know, how you should draw lines, what decisions to make. So in order to figure out how Section 2 really applies in practice, it's important to talk through what the Supreme Court has done with it. And so that's what I'm going to focus on now. Some of the key Supreme Court rulings, and I think that this will help give you a clearer sense of how Section 2 actually operates and some of the considerations that you'll need to be thinking about. So the most important ruling on this, the one that sort of set the course for future cases, is a case from 1986 called Thornburg versus Jingles. And it established the vote dilution framework that the Supreme Court has applied under Section 2 ever since. And the Jingles case provides for three necessary preconditions that litigants who come to court asserting a Section 2 violation have to meet in order to make their case, right? These are, this is necessary but not sufficient for you to win a Section 2 case. What do you have to show? The first thing that a plaintiff has to show is compactness, that the minority group that they're, that they're trying to represent in the lawsuit is sufficiently large and geographically compact to constitute a majority in a single-member district. And let me just pause on that for a second and note a couple of things. You know, how do you measure the relevant size of the minority group? The key measure here is the citizen voting age population of the group that you're thinking about. And the reason that in this context, we focus on citizen voting age population is ultimately, we're thinking under Section 2 about opportunities to elect. Right? And so what's really relevant is who are those people that actually could show up and vote? You can't have a functional political majority unless you have, unless, you know, if you're, if you're thinking about non-citizens, if you're thinking about children. So in this context, when we're thinking about, can you constitute a majority in a single-member district? We mean citizen voting age population. Now, I also want to highlight now that this first precondition sets an important constraint on the Voting Rights Act's scope, especially in Wisconsin, right? It means although we have communities of color across the state, you know, across the state, we have Native American tribes on and off reservations. For the most part, in Wisconsin, these groups are not sufficiently large that they could form a majority in a single-member district. Now, I want to be very clear. I do not mean to suggest that that means that you should discount the desires of those communities, that you shouldn't think about them as communities of interest and take account of them in the process. But it does mean that you don't have to worry about being sued by those groups if you don't form a suitable district. They're simply, they simply don't have a Section 2 right. And as I'll show you later, it's really just a limited part of the state where Section 2 is directly implicated. So that's the first factor, compactness. The second precondition is sometimes The second precondition is sometimes called minority political cohesion. Right? Once you've established that there is this large and geographically compact minority group, you want to ask whether they are politically cohesive. In other words, do members of the group generally vote the same way and prefer the same candidates? If the answer to that question is no, they're not politically cohesive, then there's not as much reason to worry about creating a district to suit them, right? They don't have candidates of their choice as a group that they would be trying to elect. So you need to do some assessment of political cohesion. Number three, majority block voting. So not only do you consider whether the minority group is politically cohesive, but do the members of the surrounding majority community vote differently from the minority community and do so in ways that are usually sufficient to defeat the minority's preferred candidate? And so together, these two preconditions are, you can think of them as assessing racial polarization or ethnic polarization. Is there quite a bit of cohesion on the minority group and the majority group that point in different directions? Those are the circumstances where, again, you would worry about a representational deficiency and perhaps have a need to make sure that the minority group is suitably protected. So that is the framework for analysis. Now, once these preconditions are met, that doesn't mean the plaintiffs automatically win. The court will then do some analysis of the totality of the circumstances and assess their opportunities to elect their preferred representatives, but these preconditions are a lot of the analysis. Now, after this decision was made, states that were drawing district lines, particularly after the 1990 census, took away a message that they should create a lot of majority-minority districts, that where there were large minority communities, they should put them in single-member districts so that they could be majorities there. And in some instances, states went quite far in doing so. So the next important case that the Supreme Court decided that I just want to run through happened a few years later from North Carolina, a case called Shaw versus Reno. It involved North Carolina's congressional districts. There are 12 of them. And North Carolina drew two of these districts, Districts 1 and 12. One is the dark brown, 12 is the red one. They were drawn as majority-minority districts. They were majority African-American. And as you can see, these are not particularly pretty districts. They're not geographically compact at all. The Supreme Court commented that District 1 looked like a bug splattered on a windshield. District 12, they described as, as having a snake-like appearance winding through the state. Someone else suggested that if you drove down I-85 with your car doors open, you would hit most of the people who lived in that district. And so the question that the Supreme Court confronted in Shaw versus Reno is, can you sometimes go too far attempting to create majority-minority districts and create political opportunities for minority groups? And the Supreme Court's answer in Shaw versus Reno is that yes, actually, mapmakers can do too much in this regard. And if you rely excessively on race when you draw district lines, you can violate the Constitution's equal protection clause, right? The Supreme Court said in that case that it is problematic when lines can't be understood as anything other than an effort to separate voters into different jurisdictions on the basis of race, and that separation lacks sufficient justification. Right? So if you're really putting these voters from disparate parts of the state together only because of race, the court says that that raises at least a yellow and possibly a red flag. Later, the court clarified that if race is the predominant factor in drawing districts, strict judicial scrutiny applies. That doesn't mean that it's automatically illegal, but it means that you will have to come forward with a compelling reason for having drawn the districts that way. That compelling reason could be that you needed to do it that way to comply with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, but it means that you can't over-enforce Section 2 to do much more than Section 2 requires without running into potential constitutional problems by excessively relying on race. So if you put these two cases together, Jingles and Shaw versus Reno, you get what is sometimes referred to as the Goldilocks approach to race and districting. This is really what you have to try to follow, because if you consider race too little, you risk violating Section 2. You do need to be attentive to race, right? You, and it would be unrealistic to expect that you would be race-blind in this process. On the other hand, if you consider race too much, you risk violating the equal protection clause. And so instead, you have to try to consider it just right. Let me mention just two Supreme Court cases that follow these, where line drawers were trying to strike this balance, and you'll see what they did right and what they did wrong. So, oh, and I'll just mention, by the way, so this is the district that was invalidated, District 12. They ended up signing off on a district that still had a pretty, a strange shape to it. But this reconfiguration of the district, the Supreme Court ultimately decided, factors other than race predominated in its formation. So now, fast forward another decade or so, and the Supreme Court hears a case called Lulac versus Perry, which involves congressional districts in the state of Texas. Initially, after the 2000 census, a state court had to draw the lines because of a political deadlock, or sorry, a federal court drew the lines because of a political deadlock. But then there, the Texas Legislature ended up drawing a new map in 2003. And this was basically a political gerrymander on the part of the Texas legislator, legislature. And I'm going to focus on a couple of the districts that they redrew. So one district that they redrew was District 23 in the southwest part of Texas. And when they redo, they redrew District 23 to try to protect the incumbent legislator. The incumbent in that district was not the candidate of choice of the growing Latino community, and the Latino community had grown to be a majority of this district. When the district was redrawn, the Texas Legislature shifted 100,000 voters around and reduced the citizen voting age population of the district from more than 57% Latino to only 46% Latino. It had been a majority-minority district that, where the voters were about to exercise their right to elect their preferred representative, and now because of the population shifts, that right was taken away. Right? So that's the first district I want to mention. Texas, I think, knew that it might get in trouble for doing this. And so it tried to make up for the loss of District 23 by creating a new Latino opportunity district. If you look to the map on the right, you can see that into, that the Texas Legislature squeezed in another district, the green one here, District 25, running north from the border, the U.S.-Mexico border, all the way up to the Austin, Texas area. District 25, that long, thin district, was a majority Latino district. And Texas's position was, we may have taken away a Latino opportunity district in southwest Texas, but we created a new one, so no harm, no foul. What did the Supreme Court say about this? Well, the Supreme Court said that redrawing District 23, as the state did, violated Section 2. What did this, what did the state do? It cracked a large and politically cohesive minority community, making it harder for them to elect the candidate of their choice. And that was improper under Section 2. Then the court said that creating new District 25 did not compensate for the loss of District 23. Right? And, and the reason why it didn't is important. The court said that this new district was not a proper Section 2 district. It needlessly combined two distinct Latino communities and therefore was non-compact for Section 2 purposes. So the court is essentially saying, you can't take away a majority-minority district that voters have a right to and replace it with one that they don't have a right to. Right? The caution here with respect to District 25 is that you need to be sensitive to the nature of the communities. And when you have two separate Latino communities here, one a border community, one a community centered about 300 miles north in the Austin, Texas area, that are different economically, different socially, then throwing them into one district just because they are all Latino and saying, we're fulfilling the requirements of Section 2 doesn't work, right? When you think about compactness, you're not just thinking about geography, you're also thinking in a sense about cultural compactness. So these two separate Latino communities actually did not need to be in one district. And it would have been a mistake to put them in one district, according to the court in Lulac. All right. Last case that I want to run through, and that is the most recent one, back to North Carolina, Cooper versus Harris. This again involves congressional districts. After the 2010 census, lawmakers strategically shifted Black voters into these same districts that we were dealing with before, Districts 1 and 12, to restore their status as majority-minority districts. The populations of these districts had changed so that there were still substantial Black populations in these districts, but less than a majority. And, and so again, they're, they're putting voters, Black voters strategically into these districts to get above a 50% threshold. The Supreme Court evaluating this says that race predominated in the creation of those districts, right? What did the line drawers do? They announced a racial target that subordinated other districting criteria and produced boundaries that amplified divisions between Blacks and Whites. So race predominated. Now, as I said, that doesn't automatically mean that what they did was unconstitutional. Now the state has to come back and say, but we really needed to do this because of the Voting Rights Act. The Supreme Court said they did not really need to do it. Right? And in particular, with respect to District 1, the court said that there was no need to draw it as a majority-minority district because the large Black plurality in that district was already being politically successful, right? They were not being thwarted by, by a white population or anyone else in the exercise of their ability to elect their preferred representatives, right? And, and thus, Section 2 did not require packing additional Black voters into that district. And so the caution that you get from Cooper versus Harris is that, don't, don't think that just because you have a large minority community, it must be in a majority-minority district. If that community is going to be successful politically without trying to affirmatively craft a majority district, you know, that will suffice under Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. All right. Well, I hope that that gives you a little bit of background on how these provisions work. Just a couple of final words here. Oh, and so, and so what was the takeaway? Because Section 2 didn't require it, this was an unconstitutional racial gerrymander, and those two districts had to be redrawn. So just a quick word about how all this applies in Wisconsin. Wisconsin historically has just had one part of the state where there have been minority communities that are large enough that they have a Section 2 right, and that's in the Milwaukee area. And so right now, under the current Assembly maps, there are six majority Black districts and one majority Latino district. And I'll say a word about that majority Latino district in a moment, because that actually was created by a court. So those are, you know, these, just demographically, that is where there are sort of the communities in the state that are large enough to, to warrant a Section 2 treatment. There are also two majority Black state senate districts in the same area. There are no majority-minority congressional districts in the state, although, as I'm sure you're all aware, well aware, the fourth district in particular is a highly diverse district with substantial Black and Latino communities. So I mentioned that section, that the eighth Assembly district was created by a court. Well, the reason why was a case called Baldus versus Brennan. I believe that a speaker a couple of months ago talked about this case in some detail. And so I'm not planning to get into it in a lot of detail now. If you have follow-up questions about it, I'm happy to answer. Initially, when the maps were drawn in 2011, Assembly District 8 was not a majority Latino district. About 47% of its citizens' vote, citizen voting age population was Latino. There was a neighboring district, District 9, that was about 40% Latino. And a lawsuit claimed that these districts were not providing sufficient electoral opportunities for Latino voters. And that challenge was successful, right? The federal district court in this case found that the Jingles preconditions were met. You had a sufficiently large and geographically compact community. That community was politically cohesive, and there was racially polarized voting. The court then considered the totality of the circumstances and decided that in order to assure adequate representational opportunities, it was necessary to convert District 8 into a majority Latino district. Now, I just want to be clear that just because of the way these districts are configured now, that doesn't mean that it needs to be exactly that way next time. As you'll see, populations change, the Latino community is growing, populations shift around. And, and so don't, don't feel that your job is just to replicate the past. In fact, you know, if you don't do a more contextual analysis, you could run into problems. And that leads me to just some final takeaways, right? Oh, I went backwards here. Here are the takeaways. Let me just suggest to you that as you're thinking through these issues, I think you can get a few points from some of these Supreme Court cases and what's happened in the past. One is, you know, be careful upfront about drawing conclusions about what these districts should look like. Resist the idea that there should be quotas in terms of minority population percentages in districts, numerical targets for the number of majority-minority districts you should have, right? Resist racial or ethnic essentialism. Don't assume that just because people are members of a minority group, that they necessarily vote the way, the same way, think the same way, have other things in common. You may well, as you do your analysis, discover that there really are important commonalities among members of those groups, but don't begin with that conclusion and don't fixate on race and ethnicity purely for their own sake. Instead, what you want to do, what you want to do is embrace a contextual, multi-dimensional analysis. You want to think about minority groups as communities of interest. You want to think about things that they share, not purely because of their racial or ethnic background, but also perhaps because of the places they live, the history they share, the economic realities that they might share as well. And that will lead you to, to, to the right place, I think, as you're drawing these lines. Now, as you get into the weeds, it is probably going to be helpful for you to consult with some experts, to make sure that you are not, you know, running afoul of some of these requirements and that you're being sufficiently sensitive to, to commute, to the particular communities. And so experts can help along the way. But the reassuring note that I want to leave you with is, you know, you should not think of the Voting Rights Act as requiring you to do something that is entirely distinct from what you're going to be doing anyway, right? What is the Voting Rights Act about? It's about assuring fair representation for communities of color. What are you trying to do as the People's Maps Commission? You are trying to assure fair and equal representation for citizens of Wisconsin. So if that is your touchstone, it is likely to lead you generally in the right direction, and you might just find yourself needing to make a few tweaks along the way to ensure that you're being compliant with the Voting Rights Act. I mean, I suppose it is, another bit of reassurance is because of Wisconsin's demographics, this is not a situation in which if you do something wrong, if there is litigation over voting, over the Voting Rights Act, it doesn't sort of blow up the entire map, as it could in some states where you have much larger minority populations, right? We really are focusing on a few discrete areas of the state, and it's important to focus on them correctly. So let me leave things there. I'm sorry if I went a little long, but I'm very happy to, to take questions.
No worries at all, Robert. Thank you so much for, for that presentation. So we're going to go ahead and start in the sixth CD and try to finish up with the eighth with the interest of time. So, Chris Apprentice, go free.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Robert, so much for, for that information. My question is something you kind of touched on there in your concluding remarks, but I'm wondering how we should think about the Voting Rights Act along with communities of interest and how those things work together, how they're distinct, and making sure that we're not overly focused on one or the other?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question, and I think, you know, those are, those are intersecting ideas. And in fact, you know, the groups that actually are going to end up having a right under Section 2, they are in fact communities of interest, right? I mean, you ultimately are going to want to think about putting groups into a district, again, not purely because of their racial or ethnic identity, but because there might be other things that they share, maybe in part because of that identity, right? That, and, and those factors collectively make them a community that, that ought to be placed together in a district so that they have electoral opportunities, right? And again, what the Voting Rights Act is not requiring is to take members of minority groups who, who maybe, maybe you discover they actually don't have much in common politically, or you have two separate minority communities. The Voting Rights Act doesn't require you to squish them together just because they share that one aspect of their identity. So really focusing on a communities of interest analysis is going to get you a fair bit of the way there. So really focusing on a communities of interest analysis is going to get you a fair bit of the way there.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Bissonnet from the seventh CD.
Yes, thank you so much. I really don't have a question. I think, um, I wish we had more time. You know, the, the things that you were able to talk about were, I checked off about 10 different questions throughout, throughout this evening's testimony, which is phenomenal. So I just want to say thank you and, and I'll, I'll pass.
Awesome. And Commissioner Phillips from the eighth. I'm not sure. I just got your message, Tony, but sure if Attorney Eisen is on as well.
Okay. If he, that's fine. You know, I appreciate your presentation, Attorney Avlon. I think the lesson, which we already knew, is that we're going to need help in this area. And obviously we want to respect the Voting Rights Act. You know, I don't really have any question. I just really appreciate your presentation and the complexity of this issue. So thank you.
All right. Well, again, Robert, thank you so much for, for coming out and speaking to us. And we hope to, to reach out to you with any further questions. Again, you know, we're kind of pressed here, but the amazing presentation and you know, something that we've been talking about for quite some time in terms of keeping it in our purview of considering the Voting Rights Act, especially when we're considering our criterion to vote upon as a commission. So thank you so much and we truly appreciate it.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Hold on one second as we're having some technical difficulties here. Hold on one sec. And so, you know, I think at this point, we'll go ahead and move into our, our public testimony. I believe people are coming in now as we speak.
I think, why don't we go for a short two minute break while we get some technical things figured out and then we will let folks in.
Sounds perfect. See you guys in two.
Sounds good. We will now begin approximately one hour of public testimony. The individuals testifying tonight registered ahead of tonight's meeting. As a reminder to tonight's testifiers, this hearing is recorded and being livestreamed. Each individual will have three minutes to testify to the commission. To ensure the maximum members of the public can address the commission members, the commission members will not be answering any questions or providing any comments following the individual's testimony. This is a similar practice that legislative committees such as the Joint Finance Committee follows. Finally, as a reminder, if any members of the public would like to provide feedback or comments to the commission at any point throughout the tenure of the People's Maps Commission Initiative, you are encouraged to submit written comments through the public comment form, which is available on wisconsin.gov/peoplesmaps. Okay. The first individual we have testifying this evening is Wendy Carlson from the second congressional district. Wendy?
Hello. It's great to be here this evening. I live in Dane County, just across the river from Sauk Prairie and Prairie du Sac. When I retired from nursing, I was able to pursue other interests, including politics. It's been a real eye opener. Our government is supposed to be of the people, by the people and for the people, but we don't have that now. I have deep concern for the future of democracy in our state and in our country. Legislators in gerrymandered safe seats are no longer accountable to the will of the majority of voters. Often, the interests of those who make hefty donations come first and serious concerns of voters are ignored. This is undemocratic and un-American. I recently spoke with two immigrants, who both of whom have been, who have, both of whom have been citizens for many years. One's a Republican, one's a Democrat. Both of them told me this is not the same America as when I first came here. How sad is that? We need a course correction and ending gerrymandering would be a good place to start. A majority of Wisconsin voters want to ban gerrymandering. Fifty, at a recent count, 54 of Wisconsin count, Wisconsin 72 counties, both red and blue, have passed a referendum and/or a resolution asking the legislature to pass a law requiring independent, nonpartisan redistricting. Seventeen states already have an independent commission drawing their district maps. Why don't we? Most of the world's democracies use that method. Why don't we? Why doesn't Wisconsin? Iowa's independent commission has been in use for 40 years. That could be a model for our state. We don't have to have our maps drawn in secret by politicians of whatever party happens to be in power. What we also furthermore, redistricting process itself must be transparent to the public. What method was used? What algorithms? I would request that the maps drawn by this commission be compared to those drawn by our legislators. The results should then be made known through various media, i.e. newspapers, both print and online, social media, and perhaps by discussions on local TV and radio stations. As wide an audience as possible must be reached. Gerrymandering must not have a future in Wisconsin so we can make our democracy work fairly for everyone. Thank you and good luck with the map drawing. I look forward to the results.
Thank you so much, Wendy. The next individual we have is Bruce Harville from the second congressional district. Bruce? Oh, unfortunately you're muted.
See that?
There you go.
How about that? Does that work?
Yes, we can hear you. Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. It's nice to be perfect. It happens so seldom. I missed the first part of the presentations. I was having some YouTube glitches and so I had to sign off and sign back on. So I did hear the presentation on the Voting Rights Act. I missed everything before that. So if I say things that sound like I'm, I'm not appropriately referencing or responding to things that were said, I'll apologize. Basically, the point though, that I wanted to make is that even an independent commission would be good, but I'm also wondering if the starting point for whoever does it shouldn't be some sort of an algorithm based on compactness that, you know, the computer would generate an original set of maps. The results could be compared to the Voting Rights Act, particularly for any part of the state. As the gentleman mentioned, there's really only a relatively small part of the state where that might come into play. And then, you know, let the, let the algorithm, which obviously we have to decide what the components of that algorithm would be. But one place to look, I don't know if this may have come up before, but the, the website, Fox38, Nate Silver's website, has drawn maps based on a number of different scenarios. One of them is an algorithm based on compactness for each state, this congressional districts. I don't think they've done it for state senate or state legislative districts. But it does seem to me that something that takes it out of human hands in a way, takes it away from, from judgment or people's prejudices or emotions or political objectives and, and says, here's an objective way of, of creating districts. And again, to me, you know, geographical compactness as a starting point seems to make a lot of sense. If that didn't happen, it didn't make sense. I certainly, whether you use that or not as, as a starting point, I certainly would agree with some sort of independent commission that was not aligned with a particular party and that was headed very transparent process as well. So that was, those are my comments.
Thank you so much. The next individual we have is Joan Schwartz from the second congressional district. Joan?
I'm Joan Schwartz from Assembly District 78. I've lived in Madison and Stoughton where I had my law office for 32 years. I taught classes on citizenship and the law at the University of Wisconsin, Whitewater. As an attorney, over the years, I saw my clients harmed because of gerrymandered legislation. It rejected Madison Medicare expansion, restricted Badger Care, passed right to work legislation, restrict family planning laws and defunding the Planned Parenthood. Dark money perpetuates gerrymandering, but this legislature will not even allow voters' demands to just, for destructive campaign finance, despite the fact that 166 revolutions and referendum have been passed throughout Wisconsin to approve of a constitutional amendment to overturn Citizens United. If passed, this legislation would make Wisconsin the 23rd state to approve this amendment. Finally, this legislature didn't meet for over eight months while the COVID pandemic raged and thus passed no strategies for managing COVID. As a university educator, I heard from students about their deep distress of politics nationally and in the state. Teaching students what constitutes a good and just society, focused on the rights and responsibility of citizenship, runs counter to what this legislature has failed to do. It is difficult to engage young people when they see their legislators ignore them in a democratic process. In order to protect gerrymandered seats, a petition is pending before our Supreme Court to accept jurisdiction in order to avoid an evidence-based trial. If this petition is denied, the transparent, nonpartisan maps of the People's Maps Commission, which this legislature, by the way, refuses to recognize as valid, will be weighed against the legislatively drawn maps so as to avoid the secret map drawing process that it employed in 2011. Like the People's Maps Commission, the Dane County Redistricting Commission, of which I'm an appointed member, is tasked with drawing supervisory maps without regard to incumbency and partisanship. Lastly, when our legislature did meet finally, it introduced legislation designed to curtail the turnout vote in Wisconsin in the last presidential election. Of the nine restrictions introduced, the most draconian are first, to eliminate automatic mailing of absentee ballots. Second, limit indefinitely combined voters to those over 65 with medical proof. Third, require vote by mail applications to be under oath with a photo ID. And fourth, limit drop boxes in the parks. These restrictions are dangerously anti-democratic and will intentionally limit voting access. The legislature must stop protecting its power and gerrymandered seats and listen to the voters. We demand the transparent, nonpartisan map drawing of the People's Maps Commission. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next individual we have is Harry Friedman from the second congressional district. Harry?
Hello. Thank you. My name is Harry Friedman. I live in Madison, Wisconsin, Assembly District 77. I'm 26 years old. I believe that I speak for my peers when I say that when I think of the future, it is with a sense of impending doom. Over the course of our lives, we have watched with cynical horror as major existential crises become increasingly visible while our government sits idly by. We are a generation that has come of age with the fight for racial equity all around us, yet we see no substantive progress being made. We are entering a job market in a country of widening inequality, a nation where our financial prospects are far more bleak than those of our parents. We face a world that is in danger of mass extinction due to climate change and earth that by all accounts will become uninhabitable within our lifetime. Most people I know say jokingly, but they are not joking when they say they are not saving for retirement because they expect society to crumble long before they are ready to retire. In a country where a mob recently stormed the nation's capital and where wildfires burned regularly up and down the coast, I can see the validity of their argument. Most people I know want to solve the problems that we face. I've known incredibly motivated, talented people who've burned themselves out fighting for change in a system that is unresponsive by design. The truth is, we cannot meaningfully win a better future for ourselves because gerrymandered maps allow politicians to ignore their constituents instead of serving them. It's no wonder that trust in democracy among young people is falling. We live in a state where because of gerrymandering, politicians can choose their voters instead of the other way around. Because of gerrymandering, if we organize around an issue and change, say 10% of the public's mind on a policy, not a single thing is likely to come of it. Because of gerrymandering, we see politicians collect a paycheck while doing, while not doing their jobs for hundreds of days. The pandemic rages across their state and unemployment skyrockets. Because of gerrymandering, we can't even begin to solve any of the existential risks that plague our nation today. I'm sure that as the People's Maps Commission has made its way across the state, you've all heard a laundry list of problems resulting from gerrymandering. My generation looks at these problems knowing full well, we will inherit them if nothing is done now. Unfortunately, gerrymandered maps deny any attempt at problem solving because they have removed the consequences of political inaction. Unless politicians can be held accountable to the will of the people, we cannot address our most fundamental challenges. I come before this commission to ask for fair maps. I ask you for maps that will ensure competitive districts, forcing politicians to win votes based on the merit of their ideas and not the party initial next to their name. I ask you for maps that ensure that if a party gets 60% of the vote, they get roughly 60% of the seats in the legislature. I ask you for maps that ensure our elected leaders have to serve their constituents instead of ignoring them. Without these reforms, we cannot hope to make substantive change on any of the crises we face today. Without hope for change, all is lost. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual we have is Adam Brobbender from the second congressional district. Adam? You're on, yep. You're on mute. Perfect.
All right. Hello, mash in my screen really quick to show you guys what kind of map I'm talking about.
We would, it would be wonderful if you could submit it through the map portal. The technology makes it a little bit tricky to share screens.
Okay, because because I tried printing it off, but it wouldn't go. But um, but um, let me see, um. My name is Adam Brobbender, and I'm, and I've been following the 568 redistricting process for each state. And Wisconsin has, um. I can tell you, it has, for by population, it would have two competitive ones like the third and the first if they did it by population. And if not, then only the third would be competitive. But the second should be redrawn back to Whitewater a little bit like it was back in 2010, if that makes sense. And, um. So, well, thank you for your testimony. Sorry if I didn't explain it perfectly, but I can submit it to you guys.
That's wonderful. And if there's any problems getting it into the portal, you can definitely, we can work with you to email. You can email it to us and we'll figure out how to get it to the commissioners.
Oh, can I say something really quick?
Yeah, of course.
I forgot to let you know what Assembly District I live in, the 77th Assembly District. I'm also an intern for Representative Hung, but I'm representing myself. And I'm head of the Disability Caucus. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Disability Caucus through the Democratic Party of Wisconsin. So sorry if I didn't explain it earlier.
No, that's okay. And we can work with you to make sure that your map drawing, we can get it to the commissioners.
All right, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
For your time.
Of course. The next individual that we have this evening is Adam Rothschild from the second congressional district. Or Matt, I'm so sorry. I'm re-reading the very long list of wonderful testifiers we have this evening. So Matt?
No worries. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Matt Rothschild. I'm the executive director at the Wisconsin Democracy Campaign here in Madison. For the past 26 years, we've been advocating for pro-democracy reforms in Wisconsin, including an end to partisan gerrymandering because we believe in a democracy where everyone has an equal voice. I'd like to commend Governor Evers for his vision in establishing the People's Maps Commission. And I'd like to commend all of you commissioners for taking your jobs so seriously. Your dedication to a participatory, transparent process is a model for how redistricting should be done. At the Wisconsin Democracy Campaign, we believe strongly that the only way to end partisan gerrymandering is to take the map drawing out of the hands of the elected officials. It doesn't matter whether Republicans are rigging the maps or Democrats are rigging the maps. Rigging the maps is wrong, period. No party that just happens to be in power when the census figures come out should be able to keep itself in power simply by moving lines here or there on a map. That's crazy. People of Wisconsin overwhelmingly agree with this. That's why 56 counties have passed referendums or resolutions urging the legislature to change the law that so we have an independent, nonpartisan redistricting process here. Rather than the elected officials drawing the maps, we believe that career civil servants at the Legislative Reference Bureau should draw the maps. And to ensure that no bias creeps in, we believe that they shouldn't be allowed to use political demographic data in the drawing of the district lines, except as needed, to abide by Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. I know some people like to say everyone's biased, but when you have nonpartisan civil servants drawing the maps and you prohibit them from using political demographic data, you get rid of the possibility of bias. And it's interesting to note that the people who tend to make this argument about bias are elected officials themselves, the most biased people around. Another bogus argument they make is that the state constitution requires the legislature to draw the maps. Not true. The legislature still gets to vote on the maps in that way to carry out its constitutional duty under Article 4, Section 3 of our state constitution to apportion, I'm quoting now, apportion in district anew the members of the Senate and Assembly. But Article 4, Section 3 does not specify that the elected officials must be the ones actually physically drawing the maps. Look, in 2011, a political scientist from Oklahoma City was flown in to draw the maps. So who's kidding who here? Let's remember also that in 2011, the drawing was done in the dark, in the locked map room of a private law office. The public wasn't allowed into the locked map room. The media wasn't allowed into the locked map room. Only members of one party were allowed in the locked map room. And before they could leave the locked map room, they had to sign an oath of secrecy. That's not how redistricting should be done in a democracy. That's 180 degrees from how redistricting should be done in a democracy. Redistricting should be done in sunlight, not in darkness. It should be done in public, not in a locked map room of a private law office. It should be done with maximum public input, like you're allowing today, not with the bare minimum and then ram through. And it should be, it should be done, it must be done to give everyone an equal voice, not to muffle the voices of those that the elected officials in power don't like. So I thank you for considering my views, and I thank you again for all that you're doing.
Thank you. Next individual we have is Elizabeth Trevino from the second congressional district.
Everyone, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Trevino. I grew up in northeastern Wisconsin and am a current resident of Dane County. I am also the state director for On the Line Wisconsin. On the Line is a national campaign to restore fairness to our democracy and ensure every American has an equal say in our government. The campaign is committed to achieving more responsive, representative, and trusted democracy through the creation of fair legislative and congressional district maps. To that end, I encourage the commission to consider two following redistricting principles when starting the map drafting process. One is to establish clear, prioritized criteria, and the other is to start map making on a clean slate. The commission should establish and implement a clear, prioritized set of criteria before it begins to draft maps. Redistricting criteria and guidelines are often in conflict with one another, and the process requires making choices on these competing interests. By creating a clear set of criteria based in order of priority, the commission can ensure the People's Maps adequately take into account the testimony given to the commission and also better reflect Wisconsinites across the state. While all redistricting criteria must comply with federal and constitutional requirements, I encourage the commission to consider including and prioritizing the following criteria. Include racial fairness and inclusivity language. While the state's maps have contributed to an unresponsive legislature that impacts every Wisconsinite, it is clear that this has had the most severe and disproportionate consequences on communities of color in the state, including a racial fairness provision into the prioritized criteria that goes beyond the language provided in the VRA is crucial to rectifying this. This needs to be a top priority in guiding how new maps are drawn. Next, include language prioritizing and protecting communities of interest. Districts should be, should respect communities of interest to the extent practicable. The commission should make it a top priority to keep communities of interest together and whole. The second principle in map drawing that the commission should refrain from is drafting maps with a main goal of retaining the core population of existing districts. While theoretically innocuous, aiming to retain the core population from current districts can have detrimental detrimental consequences in practice. This is especially true in a state like ours, which has incredibly gerrymandered maps. The goal of this commission or any map drawer in Wisconsin should not be to reinforce already gerrymandered districts, but maintaining the core population of each district would do just that. The People's Map should be drawn on a clean slate and from scratch to be truly representative of Wisconsin and responsive to our voters. Lastly, I want to commend the tremendously important work that you all have been doing over the last five months, conducting public hearings to hear from the people all around the state about our new maps. With the inclusion of these two guiding principles, the People's Maps Commission, I think, can achieve its ultimate goal of providing a transparent redistricting process that gives us the fair maps that we deserve. Thank you for your time tonight and the work that you were doing for this team.
Okay, thank you so much. The next individual we have is Mike Leisure from the second congressional district. Michael? Oh, you're on mute. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you are.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no worries.
Hi, my name is Mike Leisure and I live in Madison. I'm a proud family doctor as well as a proud independent voter. My wife and I are relatively new Wisconsinites moving here roughly one and a half years ago, notably while my wife was 28 weeks pregnant. We were previously living in the Pacific Northwest and are originally from Austin, Texas. We moved to Wisconsin very purposefully. We could have gone anywhere in the country as we have no particular ties to Wisconsin. A major thread in our thinking was how wonderful the people are in this great state.
He looks like he's just a little bit frozen. So we're going to give him a little bit of time. I'm going to pause the clock to see if we can get him unfrozen. Oh, shoot. Okay, I think we're gonna hold, and if he comes back, we will restart his time. And we will go to the next individual, who's Carleen Betchin from the second congressional district. Carleen?
Good evening. My name is Carleen Betchin, and I live in the Village of Oregon in the 43rd Assembly District and the 15th Senate District. I am also the grassroots organizer with the Wisconsin Fair Maps Coalition. But this hasn't always been my work. I am a retired public educator. Since the 2011 redistricting, I testified before the Joint Finance Committee in every biennial budget cycle about the need for more public school funding. I was disappointed when I realized that my pleas and those of others did not matter. We could be ignored. That's when I decided to expend my energy working on the root cause of the problem, gerrymandered maps that make legislators unaccountable and unresponsive to us, the people they have taken an oath to represent. Over the past two years, I've been working with hundreds of activists and volunteers around the state. These concerned Wisconsinites want a nonpartisan process for creating electoral maps. As has been noted before in this evening and in other hearings, 56 counties, county boards, and voters in 28 counties and 20 municipalities have passed advisory resolutions and referendums by overwhelming majorities, all calling on the state legislature to create a nonpartisan redistricting process. Clearly, this crosses party lines. Next month, there will be four more countywide referendums and one municipal referendum in Wisconsin, which we expect will pass overwhelmingly as well. To bring attention to this issue, volunteers have tabled at farmers markets and fairs, hosted virtual town halls and film screenings, circulated petitions, written countless letters to the editors of local and state newspapers, called and written their representatives, and much more, mostly during this pandemic. Just last November, nearly 2,000 regular citizens submitted comments to the Wisconsin Supreme Court, and about 20 testified at the hearing for the rules change petition that Will, the Wisconsin Institute for Law and Liberty, and Scott Jensen had proposed that would make the Supreme Court the court of original jurisdiction in any future litigation on maps. And in January, over 3,000 emails were sent to state legislators asking them for a nonpartisan redistricting process. Why are these volunteers doing this? Because they see the damage that the current maps have caused, the lack of civil discourse and collaboration in the state legislature, the unwillingness to pass legislation, or in some cases, to even hold a hearing on legislation to address the needs of our state, the refusal to address the COVID crisis or cooperate in any way with the governor to find solutions, and the eagerness to use the courts, and in particular, the state Supreme Court, to decide on matters that should be debated among our representatives to find the best and most responsible remedies to the challenges facing our state. We know that the current maps were created behind closed doors by consultants and lawyers with sophisticated software with no public input. We applaud and appreciate the work of this People's Maps Commission. This is what we want, a transparent process that seeks public input and respects communities of interest. We urge the Wisconsin State Legislature to do as the governor has asked. Take up the People's Maps. It's time for maps that reflect the will of the people and respect our communities. Wisconsinites, no matter where we live, the color of our skin, or the party we belong to, should pick our representatives, not the other way around. Thank you for your work and your time. It's so appreciated.
Thank you so much. We're going to go back to Michael now, who I think has his technical difficulties well figured out. Go ahead, Michael. We'll start you from scratch at three.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. All right. So I'll start over. Hi, my name is Mike Leisure and I live in Madison. I'm a proud family doctor as well as a proud independent voter. My wife and I are relatively new Wisconsinites moving here roughly one and a half years ago, notably while my wife was 28 weeks pregnant, which I much appreciate. We were previously living in the Pacific Northwest and are originally from Austin, Texas. We moved to Wisconsin very purposefully. We could have gone anywhere in the country as we have no particular ties to Wisconsin. A major thread in our thinking was how wonderful the people are in this great state. Attributes that immediately come to mind are hardworking, gregarious, and family-centered. Since coming here, I've found that the political culture doesn't adequately represent what's best about the people of this state. The more I research Wisconsin's gerrymandered maps, the more I realize how a handful of politicians have ruthlessly corrupted our political system. In a democracy, this doesn't only undermine the institution itself, but ultimately erodes the fabric of social harmony within the society itself. As a family doc, I tend to think in terms of root cause analysis. Why spend tens of thousands on fancy treatments for an end-stage illness when we can prevent it from developing in the first place? In terms of politics, why invest my time fighting for a better healthcare system, addressing inequality, and for sound climate policy, all issues I care about, by the way, when the system itself is broken? The system must be fixed first in order for any movement to happen on any of the pressing issues facing our society. Gerrymandering is no longer a wonky political question. The COVID-19 pandemic has turned it into a life-or-death question for all of us. The shameful inaction of our legislature over the past year is deeply rooted in gerrymandered districts. No sane politician from a competitive district would bury their head in the sand, or worse, spout outright disinformation about a public health crisis right at the very moment when their constituents most needed their leadership and honesty. Every time I think about the events unfolding over the past year, I think about my 18-month-old daughter. Will the adults of this generation see things for what they are, rise to the occasion, and repair what is broken? I happen to believe we will. It's high time for us to create fair, competitive districts in this great state. Thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to speak on this critical issue.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. The next individual we have is Myra Enlow from the second congressional district.
Hello. Thank you very much for all the work that you're doing and for the opportunity to speak before you. I'm Myra Enlow, and I've lived in Iowa County for 38 years. I'm in the second CD. I'm in the 51st Assembly District and the 17th Senate District. How does gerrymandering impact me personally? My legislatures are unwilling to engage in discussion with me. Issues important to me and most Wisconsinites go unaddressed, things like Medicaid expansion, background checks, nonpartisan redistricting, campaign finance reform, to name a few. Take Medicaid expansion, for example. I volunteer at a free clinic in Dodgeville. It's heartbreaking to see working people in need of care because they don't have health insurance and to see health insurance evaporate when someone loses a job. It's unconscionable that in the United States, we need to rely on volunteers and community support to provide care. We could be covering many more people in Wisconsin at little cost to Wisconsin citizens if we had accepted Medicaid expansion. Many friends and family members have disengaged from politics. They're turned off by the extreme partisan dialogue, and they don't think their vote matters. In a gerrymandered state, they may be right. Iowa County is broken into three assembly districts, the 51st, the 80th, and the 81st, and two senate districts, the 17th and the 27th, making where I live more conservative than it would be otherwise and placing rural residents in the eastern part of the county in districts. in districts that are more urban, limiting the representation of rural concerns. Gerrymandering is a threat to representative democracy. I believe we need at least two strong political parties to assure there is competition of ideas. No party should be able to draw voting district maps to maintain their power. In Wisconsin, you can see that representative representative democracy is under siege when in the most recent assembly race, Democrats received fifty-four percent of the votes and Republicans won two-thirds of the seats. Our options to change this are limited. We cannot bring a statewide binding referendum up for a vote and the Supreme Court is unwilling to use federal courts to address the impact of political gerrymandering, even when Chief Justice Roberts concedes that partisan gerrymandering is incompatible with democratic principles. How is a heavily gerrymandered state to combat this? The public is trying to make their voice heard through non-binding referenda and resolutions and statewide polls indicate very broad support for a nonpartisan procedure. The People's Maps Commission is another important strategy to combat this. Thank you so much for all you're doing and I look forward to seeing the maps you draw compared side by side with the maps drawn by the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. The next individual is Shirley Smith from the second congressional district. Shirley?
Hi. I grew up in Marshall in rural Dane County and have lived in Madison in the Assembly, in the forty-eighth Assembly District all of my adult life. I cannot overstate the horror I feel witnessing the controlling party of our state government give up any semblance of representing the basic welfare of the people. I would never have believed that could happen. It's clear that until nonpartisan maps for voting districts are drawn and adopted, making each person's vote count equally, we ordinary citizens will continue to struggle for our lives and livelihoods. Not an exaggeration as we witness the legislature's refusal to meet and figure out a way to contain the spread of COVID nineteen. Worse, they tore down any attempt to mandate the most basic tool we have, which is for everyone across the state to wear masks. They do what their financial backers and extreme supporters want, not what's best for all the people and are secure in knowing they don't have to worry about being reelected. I'm sure people in both parties find this unbelievable as we trudge along our prolonged, isolated, weary way, hoping we make it through this as we wait for our vaccine, wondering how many more people have to die. My husband and I are fortunate. We can take care of some grandchildren while their parents work, but it has created deep rifts within our family as young parents living in different counties decide what risks they will take. We're caught in the middle and wonder how these family fractures will heal. Consistent public health guidelines from our state government would have greatly helped us work all from the same playbook from the beginning. Psychological trauma is bad enough. I can't imagine enduring that as well as losing an income, a business, a member of your family or your own health as a pandemic continues to be a political football. I don't have all the answers and no one person or political party does. We get better results when representatives of many different options work together. Combating COVID would have been hard enough with that scenario. Instead, it's an endless nightmare. Nonpartisan voting maps are the foundation for legislative problem solving and action, a fair way of both determining and carrying out the will of the majority of the people. Implementing fair maps does not mean the answers I want will materialize, but compromise is better than a permanent stalemate as special interests gut our proud state and turn us against each other. Thank you so much for the work you're doing.
You have a good evening. The next individual is Robert Borchers from the second congressional district.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Robert Borchers. I've lived in Wisconsin since nineteen ninety and in Middleton since nineteen ninety-five. I was born in Chicago. My parents taught us to be honest and to play fair. Decades ago, my grandmother volunteered there to be a precinct judge. When she arrived at the polling place, ward bosses said, "You can go home now, Blanche." Her protests at the time may have led to naught, but she learned and taught us. She shared with us that democracy promised is not necessarily democracy delivered. Even as a grad student in political geography, it took me a while to really grasp the nuts and bolts of partisan districting, gerrymandering, to see just how far the clever and calculated cracking and packing of residents into rigged districts could bias the control of those districts. It is truly a swindle that a party with less than half the population behind it can actually map districts, giving them control of seventy percent. After the tricky mapping, district majority representatives represent not the will of their constituents, but more often the directives of their parties and their largest funding sources. Think about it. A large majority of Wisconsinites now may favor Medicaid expansion or stricter pandemic measures. Are their interests really represented here in our Wisconsin? Or are we held back by those who represent party bosses? Do Russian election hackers scare you? Well, personally, I worry more about experts for hire willing to rig our democratic framework right here in Madison and the politicians willing to pay them for it. A professor explained to me in the nineteen seventies that Chicago had its own kind of democracy. Machine politics, of course, never truly was and never will be a promise worth our devotion in our lives. It was the legacy of Wisconsin's better angels that drew me and my family to Wisconsin thirty years ago. Now retired from public health service, I want so much to secure and leave a legacy of honest and fair districting for the generations that follow us in this wonderful state. It doesn't take a PhD in geography to see that the establishment of a new, just, nonpartisan districting process supported by true professionals, not hacks, can do this for us. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Governor Evers.
Thank you. The next individual is Janet Brandt from the second congressional district. Janet?
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for your time this evening. My name is Janet Brandt. I live in the town of Arena in Iowa County. As you know, Iowa County is a small, mostly rural county just west of Dane. When I moved to Iowa County more than fifteen years ago, the entire county, except for three small villages on its western border, was in one Assembly District, District fifty-one. The legislative representative from that district was able to stay in touch with the people in the county, got to know their concerns and was accountable. That all changed in twenty eleven when the political party in control of our legislature secretly drew new gerrymandered voting maps to help them gain and retain that control. Our political home in Iowa County was dismantled. Sections of Iowa County were scattered among four different Assembly Districts, forty-nine, fifty-one, eighty and eighty-one. Worst, our districts eighty and eighty-one where I live where Iowa County residents account for less than five percent of that Assembly District's total population. So now I have an Assembly Representative who does not need to have Iowa County concerns as a priority on issues that affect our county. We have to compete for his attention with people from all the other counties that he represents, putting us at a real disadvantage. Further, when I have concerns about countywide issues, and we have had many of them, I have to communicate my concerns to four different representatives. But since representatives understandably give more weight to communications from people in their own district, my input becomes diluted. In twenty eleven, the precedent of adhering to ward, municipal and county boundaries to the greatest extent possible when drawing the voting maps was ignored. In fact, as an example, in twenty twelve, the Legislative Reference Bureau drew hypothetical voting maps to demonstrate the difference between fair maps and the twenty-eleven gerrymandered maps. With the current gerrymandered maps, twelve counties are split by congressional districts. With the LRB's fair map, only three counties needed to be split. Our towns, villages, municipalities and counties represent the interests of their communities. These boundaries need to be respected in drawing our voting maps as well. I'm asking the People's Maps Commission when drawing fair maps for our state that you include a rule to respect the integrity of county and municipal boundaries to the fullest extent possible. Thanks so much for your time and your work.
Thank you. Have a good evening. The next individual is Thomas Pop from the second congressional district. Thomas?
Thank you. Prior to retiring, I worked for twenty-five years at the Legislative Audit Bureau. While at the Audit Bureau, hard as it may be to, it may be to believe, I saw the community of legislators working together when they came together around the caucus scandal. Both Republicans and Democrats were removed from office due to illegal actions. After leaving the Audit Bureau, I worked for Retired Services Volunteer Program, more commonly known as RSVP. As the Vets Helping Vets Coordinator, I was charged with finding fellow veterans who could assist veterans in need. It was very rewarding to see the veteran community bend over backwards to help fellow veterans. Once again, a true sense of community. My first experience of how gerrymandered things are in Wisconsin occurred as I was gathering nomination signatures in Janesville for a candidate who was hoping to represent the first congressional CD. I was surprised to learn that the city of Janesville was in the first CD and the town of Janesville was in the second CD. I found this very strange that the town of Janesville had different federal representation in the city of Janesville. The community of Janesville had been split apart. After this eye-opening experience, I attended several town halls where former Senators Dale Schultz, a Republican, and Tim Cullen, a Democrat, explained how Senate's state representatives no longer represented their constituents. Currently legislators are more concerned about appeasing leadership to avoid losing funds and also hope to avoid being primary. They will be reelected as long as they can win their primary. Once again, the community suffered as there's very little chance to defeat incumbents in the gerrymandered districts. A couple of events reinforced this view of legislators not opposing leadership and not representing people in their district. My first experience was when I went with several constituents to the respective legislators' offices to discuss nonpartisan redistricting. At every meeting, legislators did not, were not present, even though the meeting was set up to meet with them. They did not have to meet with these constituents as they were going to win the election in their district. The second occurred when we watched the Elections Committee of both houses bury the nonpartisan redistricting bill that was submitted last legislative session. They never brought the bill up for a public hearing, even though over seventy percent of citizens, Republican and Democrat, favored the nonpartisan approach. By the way, Democrats did the same thing in two thousand and nine. Communities of interest have been broken up to support the elections of incumbents. This reinforces the idea that your vote does not matter because you cannot affect the outcome of elections. Is my hope that this committee will be able to reestablish communities of interest so people can work together with their legislators to solve issues that affect the voters. If a legislator will not help constituents, then these communities of interest can band together to elect a representative, Republican or Democrat, that will fight for their cause. So I thank you for your efforts in what you're doing. Take care.
Thank you. Have a good evening. The next individual is Bobby Wilson from the second congressional district. Bobby?
Good evening and thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. My name is Bobby Wilson and I live in Madison, Wisconsin. I work as the Policy and Special Projects Coordinator for the Wisconsin Farmers Union. We are a member-based organization that represents family farmers across the state. As a grassroots organization, we have a strong emphasis on civic engagement and we believe that our government should represent all people. We offer a lot of opportunities for our members to engage with their elected officials throughout the year and they're often very eager to participate in the democratic process and elevate our policy priorities. However, it's becoming increasingly difficult to assure our members that their voices really matter and that the political actions they take have a meaningful impact. And that's because our districts are so gerrymandered that the will of the majority of people in Wisconsin is not represented in our government. Our members take time away from their families and their farms to meet with their legislators only to feel like they're being ignored. And that's not the way that it's supposed to be. People should feel empowered to speak up and to get involved in the causes they care about. So in order for the work that we do to matter, we need democracy to work and democracy only works when the rules are fair and when people have true representation. It does not work when the system is skewed in favor of one political party. So that's why we at Wisconsin Farmers Union see fair maps as a bedrock issue that impacts our ability to meaningfully engage on all the other issues our members care about, whether it's climate change, healthcare or rural broadband. And we know that we will not move forward on these issues and will not move forward as a state until we have a truly representative democracy. So on the issue of redistricting, our members side with the vast majority of municipalities and individual voters in Wisconsin who believe that the process should be fair, transparent and nonpartisan. Our members have adopted nonpartisan redistricting as a priority issue in six of the last eight years, which goes to show how important it is to our organization. So I just wanted to say that we support the work that you're doing at the People's Maps Commission. We'd really appreciate the time that you've taken to listen to the public and draw maps that represent all of us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The next individual is Mary Kay Baum from the second congressional district. Mary Kay? Nope, you're muted. Yep, that's okay.
Thank you.
You are.
I um lived in Madison for much of my, many of my years and was on public office, both the school board and county board. But I, my roots in rural Wisconsin really are my greatest have had the greatest impact on me. I grew up on a farm north of Appleton and my father was the Grand Shoot Fire Department Chief for forty years. My mother was a Army nurse who then became the nurse in the community and was pushed for public health. So when I I, when I was living in Madison, I spent a lot of time in Iowa County. And I spent my weekends, really lived part-time in in Iowa County and it got very involved in land conservation. And I was shocked with what happened in two thousand and twelve. I had moved out full-time because of because of cognitive changes that made made it impossible for me to work full-time anymore. So I I had become very familiar with the fifty-first Assembly District and I was a member of the Kiwanis Club in in Iowa County. It's called the Dodgeville Kiwanis. But that's where I shopped. That's where our schools, our school district headquarters was in Dodgeville, even though we had then a school in Ridgeway. But living in Ridgeway in the redistricting that happened effective two thousand twenty-one or twenty-twelve, excuse me, the Ridgeway, the eastern edge of Iowa County was combined with the eightieth Assembly District. Now, the eightieth Assembly District runs and includes most of Pittsburgh, parts of Oregon, and, and it has fourteen different school districts within it that are just partial. School districts that are divide and having been on a school, a school board myself, I couldn't imagine having multiple Assembly people to communicate with. The, the eightieth The 80th does have Mount Horb School District and Belleville's School District in its entirety, but most of the school districts in it are just bits and pieces. And in fact, there is a bit of Madison's School District that's in the Assembly District in which I am now voting, even though I am so far away from Madison and there's so many school districts in between then and now there. I'm sorry, you're starting to hear my, under pressure, my problems with speaking. That's the mild cognitive impairment that I have. I'm very glad it did not develop into Alzheimer's disease. But, so you're getting to hear a person with some disabilities and why it's even more important to me that I have representation that understands our needs. I am now on the Village Board for the Village of Ridgeway. We have 600 people living in our village. And when state aid is cut back like it has been over and over. The school district of which we are a part, the Dodgeville, it's called the Dodgeville School District, but it includes all of us in Ridgeway. It had to cut back this last year, and it closed our elementary school. Now, and I know of many other rural, especially western side of the state, schools, districts that have had to close a school. I do not believe that my Assembly Person as in the 80th Assembly District that runs to Madison understands or would feel in the same way someone who lived with the issues that these small towns have. And when I looked at the mathematics, why in the world could anyone say that the current redistricting is compact and respecting boundary lines? Then let me respect county lines. The people I knew in the 51st Assembly District, we knew them from, because Dodgeville's where we shop and where our big school performances are and where. And they, sorry, I had this all written out, and now, of course, it becomes a blur to me, but...
That's okay. It happens to the best of us. So why don't we give about 30 more seconds? And then if you would like to email us the testimony, we would love to include it.
Yes. The 80th Assembly District has only parts of three different counties. The 51st, which used to be mostly Iowa County and maybe one other whole county, and maybe a little bit of others, but they were all contiguous and they all made sense. Instead, it's a long L and it has five parts of five different counties. No one whole county. Now that's ridiculous. And I will stop with that, except to say that I spend my time working on the Drifless, the Ridgeway Pine Relics Straight Natural Area. This is a unique area from Ridgeway and west. And I ask you to think about not dividing it up into separate areas geographically, topographically. It's so different and it needs the care. And it is a destination point in many ways, but it needs people who understand the people living here and how we can flourish. But we need to have the opportunity, we need to have the help with economic development, and we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure for our villages to be able to continue to have clean water and safe streets and so forth. Thank you.
To you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last individual we have this evening is Janine Edwards from the 2nd Congressional District. Janine?
Good evening. I'm Janine Edwards. I want to tell you about my experience with a public school in Madison. My friend Dolores Marcellus died in New Orleans in July 2017. Her husband Ellis Marcellus and their musician sons partnered with me to establish in her honor a jazz education program in one Madison Public School. I pledged to give money each year for five years to establish the program. The goal is to assist in closing the gap between African-American children and white children. The families of the school represent a wide socioeconomic range. Band students were offered the opportunity to have after-school lessons in small groups with a professional musician. When I observed this program in action, I saw that there were not enough instruments and not enough sheet music to go around. Public school students are suffering from lack of adequate funds. In 2011, Wisconsin spent $1,100 per pupil, more than the United States average. Now, 10 years later, Wisconsin spends less than the national average. In fact, $327 per student, less than the national average. Legislators from gerrymandered, safe districts have continuously expanded voucher programs to pay for students to attend religious and private schools. Legislators have done this by attaching bills favoring vouchers in the omnibus budget bills since 215. Their goal is to privatize public education. A voucher in every backpack is the motto, so that a few entrepreneurs will gain the taxpayers' money. Initially, the number of students who could participate in voucher programs was limited. However, beginning in the year 2627, there will be no limit on the number of students who can have a voucher. Currently, $466 million is taken from public school districts to pay for students in religious or private schools. Most taxpayers are unaware that this amount of money is being drained from their public schools because gerrymandered legislators have hidden it from public view. Taxpayers have never had the opportunity to express their opinion of vouchers. There has never been a statewide referendum. There have been no public hearings. It is time for voters all over this state to demand a moratorium on the voucher programs. That is why we must stop the gerrymandering of voting districts. Thank you for listening to me this evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening. And thank you to all of the members of the public who testified this evening and viewed online. Chair Ford, I will now pass it back to you to close out the hearing and adjourn.
Thank you. We want to thank our two experts this evening, our Commissioners, as well as our public testimony providers. Thank you to the 2nd Congressional District for hosting our commission, albeit virtually. We truly appreciate being here this evening. We want to thank all those who have joined us throughout the months and our hearings. Thus far, we've learned a tremendous amount from you and your ideas on redistricting, as well as your concerns. We've garnered a better understanding of the technical aspects of map drawing and the levity of the task that is ahead of us. Still, although this is our final hearing, this commission's work is not yet complete. In fact, we're just getting started. In the vein of our overarching goal of transparency, we would implore you all to continue to tune into our upcoming meetings in which we will be working together, honing further our process to create maps grounded in the principles and those ideals expressed by Wisconsinites throughout the state. Now, this is where you can be most influential. We ask that you continue to submit your ideas, your thoughts, and your comments, as well as your communities of interest for our consideration. You may also submit your maps utilizing similar software to what the PMC will be using throughout our process at our website, which is wisconsin.gov/peoplesmaps/contacts-commission. Also, please continue to follow us on our newly minted Twitter page at WIPeoplesMaps for updates. You can also join us at several upcoming training to trainer events, which is hosted in association with our partners from the Tufts MGG Lab. We look forward to continuing to work with you all and working for you, Wisconsin. We stand together as ordinary citizens with a singular voice calling for what is just. Together, we all will achieve the ultimate goal of representative, nonpartisan, and fair maps. We will be in touch. This evening's hearing is now adjourned. Thank you all.